I'd like to call to order the Town of Los Gatos Council Meeting for November 18, 2025. Tonight's meeting will be relatively short. We will have two presentations, and then consent items, followed by verbal communications, council manager and attorney matters, and then with great sadness, we will acknowledge the passing of Barbara Spector and close the meeting in her honor. I'd like to start with the roll call, please.
Councilmember Estho?
Here.
Councilmember Annie?
Here.
Councilmember Badami?
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Here.
Mayor Houdis?
Here. And now if Councilmember Badami could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. We're going to start with a presentation for John Lochner. And so, Mr. Lochner, I wonder if you would be willing to join me up here in front of the table? In front of the table here? And I will say a few words, and then you can say a few words. So I'm going to read the proclamation in full. And this is about honoring John Lochner. Whereas, John Lochner has demonstrated an enduring commitment to the Town of Los Gatos and its community organizations, serving as president of the Los Gatos Chamber of Commerce, president and treasurer of the Los Gatos Lions Club, president of the Santa Clara County Council of Boy Scouts, and longstanding member of the Billy Jones Wildcat Railroad Board of Directors. And whereas, John Lochner's leadership extended to public service as a member of the Los Gatos Town Council, where he served two terms as mayor in 1975 and 1980, representing the town with distinction on the local area formation commission, and at the state level to advance legislation benefiting local communities. And whereas, for more than six decades, John Lochner has played a central role in the town's beloved community traditions, including organizing and emceeing the annual Los Gatos Tree Lighting Ceremony, and children's Christmas and holiday parade, contributing to the festive spirit that brings joy to residents and visitors alike. And whereas, John Lochner's dedication extends beyond civic service. He's an active member of St. Mary's Parish, lifelong supporter of local charities and organizations, an ambassador of goodwill through his involvement in the Veterans Memorial Support Foundation and Los Gatos Sister City programs. And whereas, John Lochner's over 60 years of service, leadership, and community spirit have left an indelible mark on the Town of Los Gatos, exemplifying the values of integrity, generosity, and hometown pride. Now, therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Los Gatos does hereby render this commendation with special appreciation to John Lochner in recognition of his many contributions to the community.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, thank you. Oh, no, no, no. Thank you all so very, very much. I would like to thank Mayor Houdis, the Town Council, and the town staff for this wonderful honor. I've been involved in this town and the tree lighting for well over 60 years, and this is probably my favorite event, and one that I have never missed. As many of you know, the town Christmas tree was planted in 1923 by the History Club of Los Gatos after it was discovered in the Santa Cruz Mountains. Shortly after, a women's auxiliary group in town placed lights on the tree at the beginning of the Christmas season. One December in the '60s, I was at the chamber office on Montebello. Across from the tree was chamber president Sue La Forge, and looked out, saw the lighting of the tree, and decided to sing some Christmas carols. Well, would eventually spread, more people came to spread each year, and eventually it became a large town-sponsored event. It's wonderful now to see the participation of the local schools and the children who patiently wait through our singing and the mayor's lighting for the arrival of Santa Claus. While I'm getting on in years, I hope to enjoy many more lightings of the town Christmas tree on the first Friday of December. Again, I thank you for this honor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Next, we will receive a presentation on the Community Health and Senior Services Commission Year-End Report. Since this is a presentation, questions of the presenter will be permitted from the council, but there will be no staff participation and no actions will be taken.
I'd like to hold this since I'm short, and it's easier for me to do it this way. So, good evening. My name is Eleanor Yek, and I'm the current chair of the Community Health and Senior Services Commission. I'd like to thank our mayor, Mayor Houdis, who has been our staff liaison this past year, Vice Mayor Moore, other council members and staff for this opportunity to present the end-of-the-year report to you. I always like to use this logo, I guess I can call it from that famous senior services report, because I think it so clearly communicates the essence of that report, where it identified the major goal areas that we have continued to work on. Next page. The report is basically composed of three different parts. I'm going to focus on the first part, the end-of-the-year report. I'm going to talk a little bit about our accomplishments and highlights, observations, and requests or recommendations. And then attached to that is the rest of the end-of-the-year report on Goals 1 to 7 that has a lot more detail. And you'll notice in that part that you have the mid-year report and the end-of-the-year report, because something we struggled with as a commission, and maybe no other commission does, was when should we report our report? Because we operate on a calendar year, and you operate on a fiscal year, and we were thinking, well, when is the best time if we want to ask for something, when should we submit our report? So just to cover all bases, we decided to do a mid-year and an end year so that we could get our thoughts out there to you. So Goals 1 to 7 have a lot more detail. After each part, you'll see the addendum, and you can look at the details there. And then the very last part says attachments and reports. We do have an excellent report that was provided by our senior services coordinator, Leif Erikson, before he left, and I thought it was really important to include that. And then we did have a report from the Los Gatos Saratoga Recreation Department. So again, I'm just going to focus on the first part here. So move on to the next page. So some accomplishments and highlights. The CHSSC has been really busy. We have very committed members who are conscientious about following goal areas and particular tasks, and it would take way too long to go into all of those, so I just decided to pick out some highlights to share with you. So beginning with Goal 1, which is basically supporting the Los Gatos Thrives Foundation. We have been strong supporters of that, we continue to be. We support the monthly movie program. Jeff Blum has been on the Finance Committee and the Communication Team, and I have also been on the Communication Team, and doing a lot of work about developing awareness in the community about the Community Center project. Next part here, I think a major highlight, no, if you would go back, sorry, I used the wrong words there. You'll see here, the hiring of a part-time senior services coordinator was really successful, we feel, in the better identification of current services and noted gaps, and you'll see that in the report from Leif Erikson. This is something that the CHSSC had long recommended. We were thrilled that it was going to happen this year, and we recognized that it was a grant-funded position, and unfortunately, that grant money is expiring at the end of December, so we recognize that, and we haven't made an issue of requesting the position to be filled next year, really respecting the fact that we're aware that the town has financial constraints that they have to deal with. We'd love to have and continue to have a senior services coordinator, and when perhaps the town is in a better condition financially, or we find additional grant money, we would like to focus on that. The continued growth of the Los Gatos Saratoga Recreation Program, the 55-plus program, their membership numbers, I think, speaks volumes to the quality of their program. It continues to evolve. They continue to offer new things based on member interest, and I think we just can't give them enough credit for the job that they are doing. Now moving on to some more general things, we're hitting Goal 2. A major highlight was the fact that the West Valley Community Services Parked Market is now available outside the Los Gatos Library two times a month, and I think that speaks to the fact that we continue to see growing numbers of people in our community and across the county who are struggling to buy food and to survive, in some cases. I was at a West Valley Services meeting this afternoon, and the numbers are just incredible. So that's a great asset to our community in addition to the Senior Adult Nutrition Program that we already have over at the Los Gatos Church. The continued support, we have continued to support, I feel, the commission, the work of the West Valley Services Provider Network meeting. Many of our commissioners attend all of their meetings. Next page. In the past, the Goal 7 Task Force has designed a survey that we sent out to service providers to get information from them about their program, their needs, and so on. This year, the process changed, and the town decided to develop a staff survey more comprehensive than the one that we had done in the past, sent it out to many more service providers, and CHSSC gave input to that. We begin to see the initial returns, and we hope at our next CHSS meeting that we'll have additional information, because the results of that survey should really guide a lot of our work in the coming year. The next item I'm really excited about, it's about Goal 4. This is an issue we've talked about for three years, how to get a volunteer exchange program going on in the community. And this year, through the work of Commissioner Stern, who is here tonight, she and she has worked with Tom Pickrow of the Los Gatos Thrives Foundation to launch a Volunteer Connections newsletter. So they're working out all the details of it. They hope to start it officially at the beginning of the year in January. But it's going to be an opportunity to connect service providers who want volunteers with community members who want to be a volunteer and really don't know where to go. Eventually, it will be hooked into the hub also, so that information will be available. Going on from there, finally, a group of us successfully finished editing and updating the Los Gatos Housing Resource Guide. Commissioner Gentile is here, he was working on that with me and Tom. Turned out to be a much bigger project than we thought. Took a lot more time than we thought, and we found lots that had to be added and changed just because so much has changed in the last 10 years. But that's been given to staff, and they're, I'm sure, doing the final vetting, formatting, et cetera, to get it posted on the website. Another successful collaboration that we're really proud of has come about because commissioners, Greg Gentile, who's here tonight, and Dick Congrad, attend all of the Complete Streets and Transportation meetings, and have gotten up probably at every meeting and spoken about the senior services roadmap and transportation goals and so on. And out of that, they have decided to form an ad hoc committee with both of our commissioners and two more from the commission itself to more specifically look at transportation needs for seniors. They do highlight that the Taste and Ride Program continues to be very popular. We'd love to extend it, maybe offer it more. Again, that's a money item, and we need to come back to that. And then the last part that I highlight here, again, we've had a good collaboration also established with the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission, and they have proposed a project called the Constitution Writing Project, which is really interesting. And the CHSSC read about it and looked at it and decided that if it is approved and it moves forward, that we would like to support them and be involved in it. So I think those are some of the major highlights of the year. And now, if we can go on to, the next page is like general observations about some issues that the commission is working on or has worked on or needs to address. So again, first item just points out that the hiring of a senior services coordinator proved to be very successful, as evidenced by the report. I won't say much more about that, but I do want to reiterate that it was that important link that began to develop between the town and the service providers that we as volunteers really don't have the opportunity to do. So it's a really important position, and hopefully at some point it will come back into being. The second one really concerns, as you know, there's been some changes to town policy recently regarding how the commissions operate, and also about how we identify our work plan for the year. So, you know, the CHSSC always thought we had a work plan because we were overseeing the implementation of the senior services roadmap, so that's what we did. But this year, with this introduction of a new process, we kind of really struggled with it and how to do it and to make it meaningful. So I think when we are working on the one for 2026, I think we need a little bit more clarification and maybe assistance in how to write up those, their work plan, the work plan, so that we continue to work on projects that we feel are meaningful to us as volunteers, and probably more importantly, really are meaningful to the town and to the Town Council to receive and to the community at large. So I think it's just a change in working process that we need to get better at. And then the last one is one that I'm very concerned about, and I don't know the answer to it. But with the newly adopted town policy of adding one commissioner to the CHSSC for a total of seven, the potential negative impact of how a quorum is determined is concerning to me. Because if a quorum is determined by the number of seats that have been filled or not, it impacts how you determine that quorum. For example, the CHSSC now has seven commissioners on it. Let's imagine that currently we have four going forward because we have three open seats. If I look at the worst-case scenario, and perhaps nobody applies for those positions, and we're left with four members, well, if the quorum is determined by the number of seats of your commission, which is seven, the quorum is four. So we have four people, and if one person is absent, then you don't have a quorum, and you basically can't have your meeting. If it's determined on the number of appointments that have been officially made, basically if you only had four in place, the quorum would be two. So it has an impact, and I don't know if that can be addressed, but I view it as problematic for perhaps our commission and other commissions to really move forward. Okay, and the last page here, on requests. This has been a request that have come from the commissioners over time. Does the council want us to continue in the role that we have been playing of basically overseeing the implementation of the senior services roadmap? And if so, we feel that we need access to additional information. For example, for any service provider, you know, what is their budget, staffing, participants, other program criteria, so that we can indeed measure, talk about, and identify service gaps. So that's something that we're just requesting. And then secondly, this is an issue that has come up many times before our commission in public comment. It's come up in just communication to individual commissioners. We know that there has been an issue in the community of certain groups not being able to utilize space in the Los Gatos Saratoga Recreation Department building. And after much discussion, the CHSSC really recommends and supports, and this is not about any particular group, but we support the availability or the ability of groups of Los Gatos citizens, nonprofits, to utilize space in that building, whether it's through the Los Gatos Recreation Department or somehow in another capacity, and either free or at the nonprofit rate that is charged. And we needed additional information about the liability that is charged to some of these groups, because apparently that became an issue too. So this is an ongoing community issue, and, you know, as commissioners, we feel we're responsible to respond, and what we did in the end was just to say, we support the use of community groups. Space is really limited in this community and places to meet, and there's value to that, about discussion, groups that might have a diversity of opinion, and even space just to hang out and socialize with people. So we're hoping that's something the town, the town staff, and the Recreation Department can meet, clarify, and kind of resolve this ongoing community issue. So that kind of concludes my report, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and if you have anything specifically related to our two commissioners who are sitting here, I'm sure they'll be happy to respond to. Any questions?
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for the thoughtful report. Really enjoyed reading it, and there's a lot there, and you all are incredibly active and do a lot of good. On your first question for the council, I would just turn it to you and ask, would you like, do you think the commission in general is interested in still sort of being involved with and overseeing the roadmap in the way that you have?
Absolutely. I think it gives us a real focus. It's very comprehensive, so it also taps into the talents and the interests of the different commissioners who really get involved in various areas. So I think it gives us a structure. I mean, we're supposed to be about senior services, and it provides us with that structure.
Okay, good. That's helpful. And then one other question. So I've, and I think this has been, as long as I've been on the council, this has been sort of a question about this commission is, so first, to that on the roadmap, I think that's fantastic. I'm glad to hear that. I think that is an important structure. I think the one thing that leaves out is the community health piece of the commission. And I think I've asked this before, do you have any thoughts or feelings on how to better incorporate the aspects of, you know, community health? I'm sure this will change potentially when there's a new cohort of commissioners, perhaps there's someone that's interested in that area of work, but generally, do you have thoughts on how to better incorporate health into your work?
You know, we've actually talked about that this year, and it is something that we've looked over. In fact, we did have a small group who prepared, you might recall, I think it was two years ago, a report on mental health services here in the community, and they had some recommendations to that, and they intended to actually go back this year and revisit some of those same providers, and because of the change in process, that quite didn't take place. But we're very aware that community health is a part of this commission. And so, yes, we do want to in particular address the mental health services because that seems to be such a critical need for all age groups in the community, and some wonderful things have happened already in that area. But we realize it's bigger than what we've done, and so part of going to the West Valley Services Providers, you hear from many different groups and aspects that they're working on, and we follow up on that. So I think we could make a concerted effort to spend more time on that, absolutely.
I think that's great, and I appreciate the work on mental health. I think that's really important, and maybe the other piece I would just add is especially, you know, you talked about West Valley Community Services and the mobile pantry. I think nutrition, I think, is a good tie-in with that, too, that you do work in senior nutrition already, so incorporating, you know, sort of food as health, I think, is another good piece of that. So thank you very much. Really appreciate being here.
And we have given some feedback, I won't say suggestions, to the 55-plus program on occasion. For example, we did support the plant-based group that was coming forward and making presentations, and we're interested in one point of having space for them to meet, too, because I think that's certainly a direction that you see many health providers moving in in terms of eating more plant-based food, et cetera, et cetera, and the implications of that across the environment. So we haven't ignored all of those things, but I do agree with you that we could put more of a focus on that.
Thank you, Chair.
Other questions? Councilmember Badami?
Ms. Yek, I must commend the commission on such a thorough, detailed report, is quite an analysis, and that was a lot of hard work. So thank you for that. My question actually is going to be for staff. Ms. Yek had expressed some concerns about the interpretation of a quorum, so can staff elaborate on the issue of the quorum being problematic for the commission?
Yes. I'll look at the cases, give a more definitive answer, but based on the Attorney General publication and the Cal Cities publication, a quorum would be a majority of the full body, so it would be a majority of the seven. But the reason the Brown Act comes into play is it determines when a meeting needs to be noticed with an agenda, and so there's nothing in the act that would prohibit less than a quorum of a body from meeting.
Thank you. I hope this is helpful.
Yeah, I do have a follow-up question. So my understanding would be that, yes, the meeting could go forward, but they couldn't make any decision.
I can get back to you on that question.
Thank you.
Councilmember Estho?
Thank you. And I do appreciate the report. I had some questions, but to follow up on that, my understanding was quorum was the number of seats filled. I mean, if you have a commission that's operating with five people for the year, I thought quorum would have been three. And then the other thing is with an even number, this commission, all the commissions have always been seven. And then years ago, one of the adult commissioners was replaced with a youth commissioner, which still kept the commission at seven, and now we're replacing the youth commissioner with an adult. So either way, my understanding is the quorum for a fully-staffed commission would be four. If it went down to six, it would still be four, because you need a majority. So if you were down to four, a quorum would be three. Is that correct?
Well, if the members, if there's seven members of a body, the quorum would be four.
But for example, and I don't think this will be the case, I think we have robust --
I hope so.
We have robust applicants coming in, but if, for example, we were only able to have, through our appointments, five people on a commission, would the quorum be three at that point?
Based on what I've read so far, it would be the four, but I can look into it further.
Okay, that's important. Thank you. And then following up, to Ms. Yek, I just wanted to follow that up. I didn't mean to
Thank you.
Get into the weeds when there's so much good stuff. I do really appreciate this report, and having served on a variety of commissions, I think it helps make the work more meaningful and move forward where there is synergy between commissions to work with other commissions. And so I know that Complete Streets and Transportation has been working with trying to create mobility, you know, and active or alternate transportation for all age groups, and I think anything that helps seniors move through the community without cars helps everybody. And so I do think that is good, meaningful work. So I appreciate that work. I think when I was on that commission, we were working on the Ride Program with Community Health and Senior Services. health and senior services. So how do you, does that work to do the ride and taste? There was a metric in here, or there was a discussion of it being very successful. And one question I had was, is it successful because a lot of seniors are participating? Or is it also successful because seniors are then turning around and using public transit? Is there a follow-up step there?
I don't know about that. I'd have to ask them. I know they have the same person arranging the restaurant that they go to every month, and that would certainly be probably a person who could track that a little bit better. I have to admit that I finally did get one of my little cards. It came in the mail. We were excited, my husband and I, and we said, we got to ride Cal trains. We used it the next time. But I hope it does that. I mean, that's the purpose of it, is to really introduce it. And even though we don't have a lot of public transit in Los Gatos, I mean, we do have surrounding communities with some public transit. So I hope so. I mean, it encouraged us to test out the cards. We said, let's see if this really works.
Great. I mean, for example, one program I'd love to see as a follow-up is maybe through the rec center, just a monthly or once in a while meet for lunch where nobody pays anything. Everybody with their Clipper cards meets at their various locations and takes the bus to a location where there's a restaurant just to meet for lunch, just to be social, or meet at the community center by bus.
I think that's a good idea. Let's bring that back to them. Okay? And, you know, in terms of their reports, I happen to be going into the Complete Streets and Transportation Committee because I like to cruise around sometime and see what people are doing. And I am so impressed with their reports that we took those two back to the CHSSC because it deals with senior issues too. And so we read their reports and discussed it and talked about it and related it to the goals.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had one question, and I think maybe the Vice Mayor has one. Regarding this idea about the Volunteer Connections newsletter, which I think could go beyond a newsletter, could actually be an app where people would register, but where are the volunteers coming from? Are they only seniors, or is it others in town, other age groups in town that want to volunteer that might help seniors?
You know, it's been my experience so far, and in a minute, I might ask Martha Stern to come up because she's working on that. But my own experience or understanding is that there has been, people request information, even if they don't necessarily belong to the 55-plus program, that seems to be a very visible stop for a lot of people and newcomers into town. And they will stop there and say, you know, I want to volunteer someplace. And so I think it's more than just seniors. You know, we always think that the seniors have the time to do that, and they do, if that's something they want to do. But I think it's a broader age range. I mean, it did come up at the West Valley Services Providers Meeting today that actually the teenagers are looking for different projects. So the idea being if we had different service groups being a part of that who bring a benefit to Los Gatos, so it's something that's going to be going on here, that the teenagers are looking for that too. And Martha, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, do you?
Well, like the community center, which started out as a center for seniors, when we got into the weeds of it, we discovered that there are, you know, people of all ages are interested in volunteering. And so we're starting it as a newsletter thing that happens once a month, and we hope to do a soft launch in January. And we're doing this under the umbrella of Los Gatos Thrives. But as time goes on and we figure out the process of this, we are looking at establishing a website which would be connected to Los Gatos Thrives, as well as the possibility of an app that you mentioned. But, and where will these volunteers come from? Well, the beginning recipients of the newsletter will be people who have expressed an interest in helping with the community center project. And they will be asked if they want to also be interested in volunteering for other things in the community. And we also have agreements from other places like the Los Gatos Rec Department to advertise for, those who are interested in volunteering can, you know, put their information here. The Outlook publication, the print publication, I'm drawing a blank right now, but we do have, yeah, ways of building the list.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, did you have a question?
I had just a follow-up on the quorum question. Sorry to belabor that, but I think it's important, especially for community health and senior services. So this might be a question for the attorney or the clerk. If Community Health and Senior Services Commission did not have a full roster of applicants, and I think there are a number of incumbent commissioners that are not re-upping, would it be possible for the town to reopen just Community Health and Senior Services for a week or so to try to find someone to fill that spot? So we don't have to do a, you know, such a big mid-year, and hopefully they don't have any quorum issues? Is that like a logistical nightmare, or would it be doable?
I can answer that question. If it's the direction of council, we can reopen it and extend it. We did get one application, and the deadline was yesterday at 5:00. So the interviews will be next Monday, and that will be part of the report if council wants to provide additional direction on any remaining vacancies.
Okay, so one application for three spots?
Correct.
So then they're at the five when, and they need four, is what we're saying? So I know this is a presentation, and so I don't know how this works, but I would very much support trying to figure out a way to give direction, to try to find folks, because I understand we had several dozen applicants for our variety of commissions, but this one in particular did not have as many. And so I think it would be good to figure out a way to get a few more folks in.
Yeah. I think we're getting a little off of the confines of the presentation, but I think this is something that may need to come back to the council if we need to make a change in policy. So, yeah, thanks for raising that. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Terrific work. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
That finishes our presentations, and now we have consent items. And I don't have any public comment on the consent items. They're all verbal. So we can now move on to the consent items. Are there any comments or questions from councilmembers or a motion? Councilmember Badami?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent items one through five.
Vice Mayor?
Second.
Okay. Any other comments? I don't see anyone online commenting on this either, so I just want to make sure I didn't skip that. Did we have anyone?
There's no hands raised until --
Okay. Then we can call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. And now we can move on to verbal communications, and I have a few cards here. Bridget Alexander and then Joe Enz.
Thank you for giving me the chance to speak. My name is Bridget Alexander, and I'm here because something that was supposed to bring hope to families like mine has instead brought stress, fear, and disappointment. I want to talk about the recent rent increase in the BMR housing program through house keys. When I entered the BMR lottery in July 2025, the posted rent for the unit was $2,224. This number mattered because that was the amount I carefully planned for as a single mother-supported family. I believe this program would finally give us stability. But when my name was finally pulled and I contacted the property, I was told the rent had jumped to $2,976, almost 700 more, for a single-income household with two children, one in the college. This is the difference between stability and struggle. I waited patiently. I followed every rule, but the sudden increase made me feel like the door I had waited so long walked through was slammed shut on my face. I am not alone. Many families are facing the same situation. It's a shock. Families who thought they finally had a chance to affordable housing are now being told that they must pay hundreds of dollars more. It was not that promised by the house keys. Tonight, I'm asking the city for the fairness and accountability. Please investigate this increase. Please protect residents who rely on BMR program. Please create a policy that honor the original rent amount at the time of the lottery. I have lived and worked in this city of Los Gatos for 10 years. I love this community. All I'm asking for is a chance to stay in the place I call a home. Please don't let families like mine fall through the cracks of the system that was supposed to protect. I am fighting not just for home, but for the chance to stay in the community with my children who grew up in the city, the only place where we have ever called home. I was standing here tonight, not just as a mother, but as a woman, fighting with everything she has to keep her family safe together. And rooted in the only community we have ever known, please don't let our hope disappear. Sorry.
Thank you very much for your comments. Because this is not on the agenda, we can't debate or even go into any detail on it, but thank you for raising this.
I want you to take a consideration of this one. Thank you.
Thank you. And then it'll be Rich Stevens and Karen Yamamoto.
Joe Enz, community organizer for Friends of the Los Gatos Creek. Just reporting everything's real positive with people out there. What we're actually doing is there's ivy that are climbing up trees and infecating them. We have a project where there's about 20 trees, and we're cutting ivy down so it doesn't choke off the trees. I had pictures, but I can't show them. And that's all I really have to say. Everybody's really doing well. Thanks.
Thank you. Rich Stevens, and then Karen Yamamoto, and then if there's anyone online.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing me. It's great to see you all again. I've been here for a while. Sorry for that. For anyone that doesn't know me, my name is Rich Stevens, and I was born in Los Gatos 60 years ago and have lived here most of my life. Thank you to each and every one of you and everyone in the town and part of the town for all of what you've done dealing with SB 330 and Builders Remedy, the nightmare the state of California put on us and most California cities. The state's requirements, to me, are absurd, and I don't think anyone wants high rises in small towns. So again, I thank you all for your effort. I want to openly and publicly thank the Swenson team because I know what they've done, especially Case, Mark, and David, the three people that I think primarily have been working on this, for being open to input and adjusting their residents of New Town Project to better fit into our town. And I know that everybody in the town, pretty close to everybody in the town, has worked with them. So I appreciate everybody who's had those conversations with them. The Swenson team has come up with a wonderful, new, and thoughtfully-designed residential neighborhood for Los Gatos that locals will welcome. Rather than towers, as some other developers are still pushing for, their new plan consists of three- and four-bedroom, unique, tasteful, and well-laid-out three-story townhomes. While minimizing disruption to surrounding residents, this new community includes a number of well-landscaped outdoor social gatherings for residents. Everyone that I've spoken with so far on this project agrees that this is something that will be great for Los Gatos. I encourage the town to move forward with it as efficiently as possible. I know there's a lot that needs to be done, but I do hope this moves forward very efficiently. Swenson, to me, should be heroes of our town. With what they've done to change from what was originally submitted to what we are talking about now should be celebrated, and I think everybody should be part of that celebration. I hope other developers will see how this new project came to be, working together with the town to arrive at an agreeable place where they, the town, and residents can be happy with the outcome. Again, thank you so much to Swenson, and especially to each and every one of you for doing everything you could to make sure this goes through, and I hope that other projects can go this way. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Yamamoto.
God, I feel short. Hold on. Hi. Got my notice about the New Town application, new application that addresses the tolling agreement. We like it. I spoke to many of our neighbors. We're excited. Like Rich has said, it's three-story townhomes, nicely done. They took into accommodation green space, parking, couple of other things. It was really nice to actually work with a developer that actually heard our concerns and actually addressed a lot of our concerns. So we're extremely pleased that they're not touching our trees. Our trees are staying, so I'm happy about that. And that they're still willing to really talk to us and address any other issues. The only other thing that I will have to say is that there's one little concern that I have before you guys move forward with this, and it has nothing to do with the property, it has to do with the retail that is existing there. I'm concerned that this application will go through too quickly, and they won't have enough time to find or relocate. And I really love my nail lady. I really love the Chinese restaurant, and I really love the O'Reilly's. So I want them to stay in our community because they have been here for like over 15, oh, and the Taekwondo place, who's been here forever helping our children. So I want, I would like this committee to look into seeing what you guys can do to make this transition happen quickly, but also efficiently and fairly for them. One little thing before I run out of time, I am curious about what happened in the court case with the other two SB 330 developments, the Ace Hardware and the Lexi. What's going on with that? Did we get any results? What's the update? When might we have an update on that? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will have an opportunity for the town attorney to speak later. So that's the last card that I have. Is there anyone online who'd like to offer verbal?
There are no hands raised until --
Okay. So we will close verbal communications, and with that, we'll move to council matters. So let me start at that end of the table. Councilmember Rennie?
Thank you, Mayor. Just getting my notes open here. So on 11/12, the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board met, but we ended up having to cancel the meeting because one of the Brown Acted locations did not come online. We ended up rescheduling the meeting for 11/14, where we did a special meeting to cover some of the more urgent items because of that cancellation. Let's see, on 11/13, I met with a Finance Commission applicant, but the last report I see, he didn't actually get his application in yet. Hopefully, he's done that. 11/13, the VTA PAC met. I filled in as an alternate day for Councilmember Isto. I think the biggest thing we did was we gave feedback on their congestion -- I think the biggest thing we did was we gave feedback on their congestion management program report and there was also something called on the wheels, wheels on the bus, where they were trying to collect real-time data for usage of the handicap seats and the bike rack. Gave a lot of feedback on that. I attended Senator Cortez's media event about the SB 429 bill, which helps to daylight and create insurance models based on real risk parameters and risk parameters that people will know what they are so they can try to reduce the risk of losing their homes in a catastrophic wildfire and know how to potentially reduce the cost of their insurance. It was held at the helipad on Lexington Reservoir. So I got an opportunity to sit in the fire helicopter and got a tour of the copter and including all of its equipment. One thing that's amazing to me, they have this little thing to suck in the water from the reservoirs. It can suck in 1,000 gallons in 46 seconds. This is an amazing helicopter. And that's all for my report. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I spoke with the Los Gatos High School Politico's Club, which is a very active club at the high school, very interested in government and politics. I attended the Hillbrook Conversations for Good. For those that don't know, Hillbrook recently expanded. They, you know, have been in Los Gatos for a very long time. They now have a high school in downtown San Jose. I think this is the second year of that high school and so they're growing outside of Los Gatos. Good on them. I met with the CEOs of Cinnamon Energy, based here in Los Gatos, and an organization called Voltpost, which is proposing a model for electric car charging infrastructure on light poles. I think it's really interesting, might be a there, there, who knows? I attended the Union School District Helping Harvest. I attended meetings of the VTA Board of Directors and the West Valley Sanitation District Board. Two quick updates from that board are, one, we are now deep into our recruitment process for our new executive. We'll be hosting our main meetings for that in just a couple of weeks. So should hopefully have someone before the end of the year for that key district. And the district is also working on creating an incentive program to help hook up some of the remaining properties in sort of, you know, the towns in the district, hook up to the sewer system as opposed to being on septic, especially the places that are already in the flatlands should be in the system but aren't. And the last thing I'll highlight is this weekend Muse Markets will be coming to downtown Los Gatos. This got rescheduled from last weekend because it rained. Muse Markets is a really, really cool sort of maker's market, creative market of people that sell artsy things. I'm underselling it. They do a better job of describing it. But one of the things that I think is really cool is they, they've been here once so far. They host markets in four cities in California, Los Angeles, Santa Barbara, San Luis Obispo, and Los Gatos, which I think is really cool that Los Gatos is a special enough place to want to, you know, sell cool art with the big guys. So check that out. It's all, it's most of Saturday.
Councilmember Risto.
Thank you. I appreciate Councilmember Rennie covering for me for VTA. I really don't have much to report on my activities. I met with a number of people who are potentially interested in applying for commissions and so I appreciate, I will look forward to seeing what the report is for who actually got their applications in today by the deadline. And then just a small announce, and I attended the West Valley Service Providers Meeting today and heard some updates that were reiterated tonight. So it's a, we have a good group of people, not only in Los Gatos, but in the surrounding areas, doing a lot of work, providing amazing services. And I think the biggest issue is helping people learn about them. So that communication's always the main part. And then this Thursday, November 20th, is the annual interfaith Thanksgiving service. And this is an event my husband and I have attended since we moved to Los Gatos in 87. It rotates to different faith communities and it's open to the whole community and celebrated with representatives from a variety of faiths. So this Thursday night at 7:00 PM, it'll be at St. Mary's this year and the public is welcome. It's interfaith and it's all about something that we should all think about every day and focus on at this time of year. What we have in common is thanks for all of the gifts that we have and there will be a reception afterwards. So my kids always used to show up when they were little, just for the cookies. So I hope to see you there.
Councilmember Badami?
Thank you, Mayor. On November 6th, I participated in a board meeting at the Clean Water, Stormwater Authority. And later that same day, I participated in a board meeting of the West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority. On November 12th, I met with the leader of Democracy Tent, Mr. Fago, who's sitting in the last pew here tonight, to discuss various town issues. And on November 17th, I participated in the Los Gatos Rec Thanksgiving Letchen, the second seating, along with the Assistant Town Manager, Katie Nomura. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I had a number of things to talk about. I participated in the Fisher Middle School Veterans Day Ceremony on the 5th. Was really impressed with their orchestra and with the whole ceremony. And there, and the veterans who showed up and connected with the students was very impressive. I participated in a roundtable with the Chamber of Commerce and got a lot of questions and had a few answers. Then on, let's see, let me skip to the following, oh, actually, one thing very interesting as part of the looking at community centers, we paid a visit to Burlingame and they had a new community center there and it was really insightful about how they, how the city did it and who it's serving and how it's serving the community. Let's see, the following week, on the 13th, I participated in the Community Health and Senior Services Commission where this report was previewed. And then in the evening, I participated as a board member of the Cities Association of Santa Clara County. There were quite a few items of interest. One is the election of an executive committee and so Tina Wallia of Saratoga is, will be the new president. J.R. Fruen of Cupertino is the first vice president. Elliot Scazola will be the second vice president and Rosemary Keme will be the treasurer secretary. There was a proposal to change the bylaws of the way and that the executive committee is chosen and works. That was deferred and continued to next year because of a technical problem in getting the mayor of Cupertino to speak. So that will be on the agenda for the Cities Association next year. I participated in a ribbon cutting of first year anniversary of French lessons on the 14th. I thought I was going to have to speak French there, but fortunately it was a women's clothing store, so it had nothing to do with actual French lessons. And then, let's see, then the last thing is that I participated and handed out pumpkin pie at the, at the Los Gatos Saratoga Recreation 55+ which had a tremendous turnout. And so let's go to Town Manager.
Just adding to those updates that are already given, as we are going to see some large-scale development in our community, the Los Gatos Lodge has received its demolition permit and so we should imminently be seeing some of those buildings come down. So for the noise and effort, I wanted to make sure the community was aware of that. In terms of Main Street and the bridge and the work that Caltrans is performing, the parking spaces on both sides of the bridge should be available by Thanksgiving weekend as the KRL should also be removed by, on Monday, November 24th. And since there's some permanent chain-link fence on both sides of the bridge that have not been installed, Caltrans needs to take a few of the parking spaces. Some will be open about a week on each side of the bridge to complete the work. We're waiting to hear back on the availability of that sidewalk and hoping that it will be available for the parade that occurs on the first weekend in December. And with that, I'll turn it back to the mayor.
Okay, thank you. Town Attorney?
Thank you. With regard to the Aria and Lex litigation, as the council knows, there was a hearing on October 15th and the town is waiting for the court's decision. We anticipate and hope that we'll have it in about two weeks.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I had a question for the Town Attorney. The speaker who spoke about the rent increase for the BMR unit, that seems, it's concerning. Would you mind looking into that and reporting back to the council on what's going on there and where we might or might not have control?
Yes, I can consult with the Community Development Director and one of us will get back to the council.
Perfect, thank you. And then one other quick thing is, is there any way for us to open the Community Health and Senior Services Commission for recruiting or are we, do we have to go through the interviews process, bring item back to council to open that again?
I can confer with the town clerk or the town clerk might have an answer this evening.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I think we've done in the past is if we have applicants who do not find a seat on an existing, one of the commissions that they applied for, is it possible to offer them a seat on a commission that has a vacancy?
Yes, the way that the agenda report is stated is that you can appoint to any of the boards and commissions on there. So I believe, I can check with the attorney, but I believe if they fill out an application, I know some of them are specific to specific commissions, but I believe it would be the discretion of the council if they wanted to make an appointment.
Okay, so in organizing that agenda, I may put that one last, so we have an opportunity. Okay, so that brings us to the end of council matters and Town Attorney. And so with great sadness, I want to acknowledge the passing of my friend and mentor and the town's mayor and council member, Barbara Spector, who passed away last week. Barbara and her husband, Ira Spector, chose Los Gatos as their home many years ago. Living here, Barbara dedicated herself to the service and betterment of the town, making it the heart of both her public and personal life. Barbara's journey in public service began with her role on the Planning Commission, where she played a pivotal role in shaping zoning ordinances and planning decisions that continue to protect our hillsides, historic residences, neighborhoods, and the downtown area. Her commitment to Los Gatos deepened as she went on to serve four terms on the town council and three terms as mayor. Barbara was a vital member of key committees, contributing to finance, policy development, the general plan, and regional efforts focused on clean water and housing. She consistently represented Los Gatos with intelligence, grace, and unwavering dedication, always prioritizing the long-term well-being of the community. In addition to her civic contributions, Barbara achieved remarkable success in her professional life. She was a dedicated teacher, an accomplished attorney, and a respected mediator and negotiator. Barbara graduated magna cum laude from Santa Clara University School of Law and earned certifications from Harvard Law School. Her peers recognized her excellence, naming her a super lawyer. She received the Brill Saltzman Award for her service to the legal profession and was honored with a lifetime achievement award from the Santa Clara County Trial Lawyers Association. Above all, Barbara's love for Los Gatos was evident in all she did. She believed deeply that living in this town was a privilege and devoted herself to preserving its unique character and spirit for future generations. As we reflect on her life and contributions tonight, we offer our deepest condolences to her family and friends, along with our heartfelt gratitude for her many years of exemplary service. And with that, I adjourn this meeting in memory and honor of Barbara Spector.